All right, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Philip Lindholm.
Here.
Ellen Talbo.
Here.
Sharon Wallace.
Here.
Mark Air.
Here.
Lynn Larson is excused at this time. Philip Combs hasn't arrived yet, but works.
He just arrived on the.
Oh, perfect. He is present. And Robert Estrada.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, Mr. Chair.
A public comment, we have no one first in person about Zoom or calling.
No, the phone line, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And public hearing, we don't have anything for this evening. We have no unfinished business. Are we going to get out of here in 15 minutes? It looks like it's a no unfinished business, but new business. We do have the overview of the comp plan. Ms. Spear, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of the Commission. What I'm going to do tonight is walk you through in a little more detail the scope of what will be the 2024 lion's share of what you do, at least for the first half of the year. And it's related to the tenure process to update our comprehensive plan and related development regulations. So I will walk through, you received this in writing as a memo to you, but I'll be walking through that. Please do stop me at any point. This is supposed to be a dialogue for all of you. I'm hoping to be able to answer questions that you may have tonight. But the offer stands if it's still needed to be meeting with people one-on-one after tonight. So with that, I will start to share. One second. All right. So we've spoken a little bit about this before, but this is a periodic update or a periodic review. And what that means is it's more than the annual process that the city does with its comprehensive plan reviewing. Once a year, on a general, as a general rule, either the city itself or members of the public can suggest a change, whether it's a rezoning of some parcels, whether it's a policy change, whether it is some edit that needs to be made to development regulations. Those are called for every summer, and then there's a review process fall into the next spring each year when that happens. And that's the normal nine years out of 10. But where we are now is this tenure process for a front-to-back, full, robust review of every element in the comprehensive plan. And there are a couple of reasons why the city needs to do this. What you'll see here first and foremost is there are actually infrastructure grants and loans that the city would not be eligible for if it did not conduct its comprehensive plan review and be found, be certified by Puget Sound Regional Council and/or found to be compliant if someone were to ever challenge this and go to the Growth Management Hearings Board. So we are finishing this process by the end of December. And then after that, there is now a five-year check-in that the state law requires. So we'll get done by the end of 2024. And then by the end of 2029, essentially, the city has to check in with the state and say, hey, here's the progress of what's happened since the five years ago. This is where we think we're doing with our 10-year plan. And then 10 years from now, we'll be working through this process once again. So there are six basic things that Lakewood had to make sure it was doing when it launched its 24 process. And I'm just using the abbreviation 24 CPPR to stand for 24 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review, just because that's so much to say and write. But there you have it. The six tasks are establishing a work program, and that was done in the fall of '22, and the city council adopted it in early '23. Then it's to looking, looking at land use plans, policies, and regulations. So what does the city want to see kind of as a vision? And what are the actual rules that somebody has to follow to implement that, whether they be a private developer or a public institution or the city itself, if it wants to do something like in its parks? There needs to be a robust public engagement program throughout this process. And then there needs to be notice to the Department of Commerce, sorry for that repetitive there, for draft plan and regulation updates. There needs to be legislative action, and that will be this year in front of you and then the city council on any proposed amendments being suggested. And then again, things need to be submitted to PSRC for certification before the end of the year. So what is the scope, really? On the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see there's these elements that are listed. So land use, housing, capital facilities, et cetera. And each one of those are what we would call chapters or elements of the comprehensive plan. So whether they are worded or named exactly like that, it might be a little different in the city's comp plan as it sits right now. But those are all areas where we need to review and verify that things are up to date and consistent with state law and regional policy. And then you'll also see one that's called optional elements. That is, if the city has chosen, or if a city has chosen to adopt things like subarea plans, then those are also subject to review. And so for Lakewood, we do have three subarea plans. I'll talk a little bit more about them tonight that are being reviewed as part of this process. Section two, the stuff on the right, is showing you which development regulations are also subject to review and edits. Critical areas, so those areas that, whether it's a steep slope or a wetland or a buffer to a sensitive area of some kind, those types of areas that are not necessarily fully buildable or buildable at all. The zoning code itself, does the zoning reflect the policies in the comp plan? And also, does the zoning code make sure that those, in particular, for this cycle, housing rules that the state legislature has recently adopted, does our zoning code allow all of that to happen? And then there's a number of other things that are also being reviewed. And again, this is pretty comprehensive through multiple titles of the city's municipal code. We are actually reorganizing the comprehensive plan itself. So on the left-hand side, you'll see right now we have 11 chapters. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see we're expanding that from 11 to 15. And then there'll be appendices attached as well. And this was a purposeful choice to be a little more consistent with the way the Growth Management Act now reads. So it says at the state law level, you have to have this, you have to have that. And so we've laid those out of specific chapters. And then we also have the optional, for instance, subarea plans included here in chapter, or element 11. So again, what are we talking about? It's the elements. And we have to apply them or compare them to what you see in that graphic onto the right-hand side. The state law that says there's such a thing as a rural area. Then inside the rural area, there's an urban area. And then inside urban areas, there's the smaller thing called the city, right? That's the very fundamental land use planning idea in Washington State. And then the Growth Management Act says, okay, within the rural area, these types of things are allowed or encouraged. Same thing for an urban area, which could be like Parkland-Spanaway. That would be an urban, but not a city area. And then you have the cities themselves. And there's rules and laws about what's allowed within each one of those types of areas. Then we also have in Central Puget Sound regional-level policies to try to be consistent among the, in this case, four different counties and all of their cities, trying to plan for, for instance, transportation, infrastructure, and systems across borders. And you don't want to have one weird set of rules, comparatively speaking, to something immediately adjacent, causing confusion. And that would apply to more than just roads. Then at the countywide level, you have planning policies as well. And then you'll see the city's comprehensive plan, that's where it fits into the mix. And at the bottom of your graphic here are the actual implementing regulations that Lakewood adopts and enforces. So the big issue, I've said a couple of times now, is related to housing this year. And so that will be where a lot of public engagement is happening, as well as a number of changes to our zoning and development regulations. A couple of other things that are of high interest to the city council are short-term rentals and whether they are going to be allowed in accessory dwelling units, given the new changes about ADUs in state law. And also, does the city need to reexamine its current parking policies? Again, because of housing densification that state law now is requiring in some of the areas of Lakewood that historically have not been as high density as now going to be allowed for people to choose to build on their property.
Ms. Spear?
Yes?
Question regarding short-term rentals. So the Planning Commission, few months back, decided to allow. The city postponed, city council postponed their decision.
Correct.
So will our decision stand? Or will we have to look at it again?
That's the pleasure of the commission, I would think. That as it stands, there's a resolution that was adopted by the commission last fall that was then forwarded to the city council. And as Mr. Estrada said, the council looked at those recommendations, had a couple of discussions about this issue, and decided to wait on taking action until they saw the full package for the 2024 update. And so if you feel, after talking about these issues as well, that you want to tweak that, update it, refine it, or keep it exactly the same, that'll be up to you. And then they will be waiting to hear back about short-term rentals as part of the full package that goes to them.
Well, we may want to revisit that for the sake of, for the new members, to ensure that at least this, this new commission is fully in agreement with that. I would, I think y'all would like to know how and why the commission reached that decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So here are our optional planning areas in the city. So you see three different colors on the map to the right. The gold one in the center is where we're sitting. This is the downtown subarea. That was adopted in 2018, its own plan within a plan, if you will, and related regulations. The plan to the southeast, I guess that is, is the, called the Station District Subarea. And then down on the southwest area, you'll see the pink, that is Tillicum. All three of these plans are being reviewed this year for a couple of different reasons, starting with Tillicum. The last time it was updated actually wasn't, or it was 2011. So it's been quite a while. And in addition to just the plan being somewhat out of date, since it was adopted, obviously, there's two new I-5 interchanges that have been built. And there are some other things that are affecting development patterns in that area of the city. And we're also expanding the subarea to be not just the pink area you see right there, but it's going to expand to incorporate Woodbrook, which is that part of the city, kind of that rectangular shape below I-5. And it looks like, Mr. Chair, you have a question online from Mr. Combs.
Mr. Combs, please.
Just specifically on that adoption of Woodbrook into that, is?
Mr. Combs, can you hear us?
Yeah, are you able to hear me?
I'm not sure why we can't hear him.
Well, he's muted himself, isn't he?
Okay.
Are you able to hear me now?
Looks like.
He's talking, but you can't hear him. Maybe, Mr. Combs, you could type your question into the chat, and I can share it with the commission.
Oh, you have five minutes to get here, so.
Okay. And while he's doing that, perhaps I'll just keep going, and then we'll check back with him. All right, so, sorry, let me get. All right. Another big issue for the 2024 plan review is making sure that there was sufficient public participation. And this is actually now a true requirement in the Growth Management Act itself. Not only that there is participation, but there are choices for the ways people can engage. And that it is early and continuous throughout the planning process. So we now have had one big open house. We actually have another one a week from yesterday out at the Fort Silicon Park Pavilion. And we have a third scheduled at the Clover Park Technical College Rotunda in February. We may even do a fourth or possibly a fifth, depending on where we can find other parts of the city where we can host something like, that we think will hold a large enough group of people that we would expect. But these are to really try to make sure that this is responsive to, the work that's going to eventually come from you as a recommendation to council is responsive to what you hear from the general public. And you also have two steering committees working on this right now that'll bring you information as well. One is for the full plan update, and the other is specific to Tillicum. So those two groups will also be bringing recommendations to you here in the relatively near future.
So it would be advantageous to us if, if we attended.
You're welcome to attend, yes, absolutely. And they will be broadcast via Zoom as well. So you can do that electronically, if you'd rather not be there in person for whatever reason.
Will they be recorded, so we can watch after the fact?
Yep. We will also do that. And then in terms of what we've done to date, in addition to our November open house that we did, we had, since fall of '22, two different websites. One is part of the city's city website, and the other is called Lakewood Wa Speaks. And that is actually where people can submit public comment right now. And it's being collected as part of the public record that will come to you. There's the city's newsletter that gets sent out to the whole city. There's social media, there's direct mailing, including the one that just came out for those two open houses that'll be happening soon. There was already one citizen committee that provided updates regarding the housing element and energy and climate change element. And then we have those two other committees meeting now. They've met several times, and they'll continue to do that until they provide their recommendation to you. So I'm going to read you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, the, unless you can see that, the question that came from Mr. Combs over chat. "Does it make sense to have Woodbrook have its own subarea plan, given its size and different zoning and objectives than Tillicum? Keeping them together could muddy the waters for each area." And I would just say that the reason the city did what it did was in part because the Tillicum and Woodbrook residents were interested in partnering in this process. And we do fully recognize that over the last few years, there's been some rezoning to Woodbrook to actually put a lot of it as industrial. And there's been a lot of redevelopment with warehouses, et cetera, there. So the number of residents has gone down. But we wanted to make sure that they felt like their voice was being heard and with their relationship that, yes, it's two different areas. Yes, they have two personalities, but they did want to be working together on this process.
Is it felt like the, yeah, is it felt like they have different objectives?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Not at this point. All right, so where we are in terms of process, I will continue to bring this to you. As I said, I think it's our last meeting, every single meeting, until, at this point, June 26th. We are going to have reviewing of draft language and draft policies in front of you. But then on May 1st will be the start of your formal process, where we will bring to you the whole plan, all of the draft regulations, and the subarea plan analyses that have been done. You will have seen all of it prior too, but that it will all come to you as one piece, one package. And then on June 5th is when you would be scheduled to have a public hearing. The idea here, of course, too, is, and I should say this all the time, but this is the suggested schedule. If you feel as the advisory body to the city council that you need more time, either for part or for all of this discussion, that is entirely up to you, and you're able to make that request and, and direction to staff, and just let the council know that. But at this point, it would be May 1st. And then May 15th, you would have another meeting where you could discuss. June 5th would be a public hearing. You have the prerogative to continue public hearings or hold another public hearing, should you feel the need to do that. If not, though, if you're going forward with your Planning Commission hearing on June 5th, then you would be taking action by June 26th. And I should also say, I mentioned last time, a special meeting on May 29th, because it's that fifth week. June 26th is another special meeting. It's, it's the fourth week of the month, rather than the third, because we have Juneteenth. So please do mark down on your calendars, June 26th. That's, that will be a key meeting for this process. And then assuming everything comes out of council, excuse me, out of the commission by June 26th, the council will pick it up and start its process on July 8th. They will also have the introduction of the entire package. They'll have their, at least their first public hearing on July 15th. And then they will have a series of discussions, study sessions, regular meetings, potentially, again, another partial or full public hearing, should they want to. And then at this point, they're scheduled to take action on September 3rd. And then we do our process of notifying Puget Sound Regional Council and make sure that everything is, in their mind, ready to be certified.
Question?
Yes, Ms. Wallace.
Pardon me. Has, are there any areas that are particular heritage areas, for lack of a better term, that we should be sensitive to?
Historical areas within the city, or?
Historical, or where certain ethnic groups consider them areas that they have traditionally lived in and would prefer to live in, that we should try to specifically look at their particular needs?
Are you referring to pre-Western European people being here?
Whatever it might be, I don't know. I mean, there's, there's a lot of areas that have been, that are very old and have groups, certain groups that have been established there. And you can look and see what kind of restaurants they have and that. So there's different parts of Lakewood that have different groupings of people from different ethnicities. And so those areas may have particular needs that I'm not aware of. So, you know, Koreatown might have particular needs that I'm not aware of, or some of the other areas, for example. So is there any way, do we have any data on, on those particular heritage areas? Do they have any specific wants or needs that we should try to address?
I can answer that at kind of a high level as of right now. Within the comprehensive plan, we do have recognized centers of local importance or centers of municipal importance. And that kind of lays out eight different places within the city that have their own little identity. And one of them is in the International District. That's along Pacific Highway and South Tacoma Way. And then there's also, again, within the subareas, that was originally kind of drawn in specific areas of culture, of personality, of, of that type as well. And that's where the Tillicum plan came from, for instance. We also have the ongoing issue of policies now and rules from the state saying you will allow this much density in a, in a particular area, which do put challenges and pressure on established lower-income neighborhoods, because they are the prime real estate for redevelopment. And so we are going to be grappling with, and when I say we, I'm including you, as well as city staff, to bring this to council, the, the competing policies of anti-displacement. You know, leave, leave the existing affordable housing there, stability for those people. And then this idea of redeveloping and allowing more housing within a certain footprint. And both in the Station District, that was recognized, but now we've got other parts of the city where this is also going to affect people that have lived there for quite a while. I am not aware, other than the International District itself, if there's any parts of the city other than that where there's kind of a cultural enclave, if you will. But I could be wrong, there, there could be others. So what we are trying to do, and I mentioned the open houses that are still to be scheduled, what we're trying to do, for instance, is going to the International District, try to have translators there on site, if there's ESL attendees, and try to get their feedback and have people there that they trust and know from the community to help us with that communication. There is some historical information in our current comprehensive plan that talks about these things as well. And it is a confusing situation for Lakewood, because under the State Growth Management Act, they have all these goals, and they're all supposed to be the same amount of importance, the same weight, is what they say, right? And there's 14 of them or 15 of them now. And so you're supposed to be weighing climate change, housing affordability, private property rights, environment, all at the same time, at the same weight. And how the heck does a, a local government do that is, is the question. So I hope that helped a little bit.
Well, no, it, it does. And one of the other areas that I noticed is all along Fonder's Corner and along South Tacoma Way, that has become, there's a lot of other things. And so you addressed part of what I was wondering about was, was like language. And so some of those people, if we have meetings, it would be nice, for example, perhaps they would like to be spoken to in Spanish, or we need to do it in Korean, or perhaps, I don't know what.
Yeah.
But, but depending on those, I want, I want to be sensitive to those needs as well.
Right.
Because they're a significant part of our community.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Is there any other member have a question regarding the same subject? Ms. Talbo?
I just, I guess, along the same lines, I, I thank you for ask, for asking the question, because I do want to also ensure that, that bilingual-speaking communities are invited in this process. And particularly, because this process, we only, we only do it, I guess, one in every 10 years and then going every five. So, you know, knowing that the, the demographics of the city has changed over time. I think I had seen somewhere in a Clover Park School District flyer that the, that the demographics of the school district are like 22% Latino. And so being transparent and, and those core languages and, and non-English-speaking languages in the city, I think is important in this process. And however we can be inclusionary in this kind of once every five, once every 10 years, is valuable, especially because, and it seems like in, well, there's, I think there's just a lot to be heard from, from these communities, so that's all I would add.
I would totally agree with that. And if there's, if, if any of you are aware of cultural organizations, religious organizations, community X, Y, or Z, that you could share with me, I would very much appreciate it. We are trying our best, but we don't, we just simply don't know, and we don't have the connections necessarily with those populations. So any assistance, any suggestions would be great.
Regarding the displacement issue, you mentioned the Station District. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure, if you were to look at the current Station District Subarea Plan, it says this is an area that has, whether it's a mobile home park or whether it's other pre, pre-World War II or just post-World War II housing in those areas, that is kind of, they call it naturally occurring affordable housing, or the acronym is NOAA, that's the new thing to, to call this stuff. But it, it's the stuff that's affordable right now, and there's people that have lived in it for a long time. And there is some of that in the subarea, but at the same time, it's right next to the Sounder Station, which is obviously a major transit stop. And so the idea is we densify, we build up in order to maximize the use of that transit system. And so what do you do to try to ensure that the people that live there now are not going to be physically eventually forced out because of economic pressures or because of these rules about housing densification? And what is the solution? Is it to try to make sure that whoever builds a new housing development lets them in? Or is it, you simply say, we are going to put an overlay, a zone over the zone that says, this particular spot has naturally occurring, existing affordable housing and it, it gets to stay because it is also a policy that we're supposed to be following? No, it's, it's in the subarea plan right now a little bit.
I thought.
Ms. Wells?
Yeah, thank you. I think that that area really could use improvement and, but I would not, but where the residents live in the meantime, if you're doing that, is the thing that concerns me. And, you know, driving through there, it's, it, redevelopment would be good for the residents if we could do it in a way that would maintain it to be affordable for them. And I don't know if it would be, and I'm not going to get into specifics, that's not my. But, but say you could do, for just an example, if they could be able to be the first in line, say, for, for new townhouses, and we could put a small park in there and then redevelop sections of it so that people could then have first dibs, if you would. I don't know if that's possible or legal or that, just, I'm just kind of thinking. It would be nice to then let them have access first to it so that they could afford it and then kind of do it in some sort of systematic way. That way they would be close to transportation, they would have a good area redeveloped. That would be nice. So I don't know how that you do that, but if we could do something like that, to me, that would be really good for everybody.
There's planning that the city can do, but the city is not a housing developer. The city is not a land developer. And we ultimately, if you want to go really macro, it is private market and, and public regulation. And how do they interact with each other? And how do we handle, on top of all of that, the fact that generally speaking, housing prices goes up, goes up about three times faster than people's income. So there are so many big forces, as well as all the local idiosyncrasies within the city of Lakewood that we're having to deal with. But yes, and the idea is, we are trying to be responsive to and responsible for that existing housing as a, as an affordable tool for the people that live there. But at the same time, we've got these other pressures. So it, it's not going to be an easy conversation. And it's, it's not unique to Lakewood, but we certainly have this very strong majority population, actually, that is now non-white, it's BIPOC, if you want to use that term. And how they get recognized going forward in the 24 comp plan and future comp plan planning processes is going to be key.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Spear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to step through a couple of other things that were also included in your packet for this evening. First of all, I'm just calling it the hot topics. And again, I've, I've said this almost ad nauseam, but housing is a big thing. The city is reacting to bills that were passed in '22 and also 2023. First of all, the idea that you now as a city no longer just plan for one big number as a 20-year horizon, saying Lakewood, in our case, you have to plan for, and for us, it's this 9,378 number of housing units. That's anything from an apartment to a, a single-family detached. It's now, not only is that your total number, but you also have to break that down into the various economic area median income brackets that were established under state law. So out of the 9,378, for instance, before Lakewood between now and 2044, up to 30% of area median income, 0 to 30%. These are people, for the most part, who simply are unable to work for whatever reason, whether it's a physical or a mental disability, et cetera. And they are in what is called permanent supportive housing, meaning there are social services provided to them. There's supposed to be 600, 1,637 of those units allowed in the city's plan and hopefully they get realized by 2044. If you go to the right, you'll see there's different brackets, 30 to 50, 50 to 80, et cetera. But the idea is now, the city has to say, okay, we can show on paper at least that there is enough zoning in the city and the regulations allow the creation of this many more units at each of these affordability rates by 2044. This is a new process. This is a change to state approach to growth management. It's, was adopted about 30 years ago and the idea at the time was this was bottom-up. It was local governments deciding things and then the state allowing that discretion to happen. Other than that bigger, there's rural, there's urban, and there's cities, right? Now we've come and turned that on its head over the last few years, specific to housing because the legislature said, this is such an issue, we need to step in. So now the city is having to, to grapple with these numbers and trying to figure out how zoning needs to change to hit that. This is the topic that was at the November open house and it will be the one that is on January 23rd as well. We'll talk about it a little more, I think, in February, but we're going to be adding some other topics too. But this is where people see it and feel it in their own neighborhoods. As time goes by, they're going to suddenly have different neighbors or more neighbors and trying to explain as much as we can ahead of time why this is happening. The other thing related to housing and the number of units to plan for is in the downtown and in the Station District subareas, at the time they were adopted, there were a certain number of units identified to go there. So this first or second column here shows you that about a quarter of the city's growth for the year 2035, pretty close to 44, but a little bit less, there was about 2,255 units identified to come into downtown. And then for Station District, it was about 18% of the city total or 1,720. These two numbers, although they might still make a lot of sense just strictly zoning-wise, they do not reflect that idea of it has to be for a certain number of units at these different economic levels. So it's complicated now a little bit. And the city, part of what you'll see when this comes to you in a, in a little bit, in a couple of months, the analysis to say, okay, these numbers might stay as same as a total, but here's how we're having to break that down further based on state law. So any questions on, on that part of the housing issues?
Clarification on MA, on AMI.
Yep.
The AMI for Lakewood is, what, about 65,000?
For the household, yes.
Okay. Okay, and further on down, we go to how many units per level and we'll talk about that then. Thank you.
Yeah. The other piece that has now been added on top of that, you have to plan for certain levels of affordability, is you also have to allow, as a jurisdiction, middle housing, which is defined up here. So it could be duplexes, up to sixplexes. It could be townhomes and then different types of apartments or cottage housing. Those are all this area of housing that for a long time, many parts of local government in Washington State have either not allowed or they've just been silent on. And we've turned into kind of development patterns of it's either a big apartment or it's a single-family detached. And the stuff that's in the middle isn't getting built very often. And this is where the, many will say the affordability lies, where it's not so much land or it's simply not so much square footage. All these various other factors, cheaper land because you're doing multiple units on a particular parcel. That all turns into more affordable housing with these middle housing units. You have to allow that as a city now, at least two units per lot everywhere in Lakewood where there has traditionally been just single family. And then if you're within a quarter mile of what is termed a major transit stop, you have to go up to four. And that's in addition to the primary residence. So you could have, you're driving down Nianza, you look to your left or your right and you see a house. Two more units on that same parcel is something that the city has to allow under this new state law. And that's where the, the parking stuff kind of trickles out of that. Where do these people park? If it's not going to be on the lot itself and there's no way to regulate on-street? That's, that's the complicating factor related to this new requirement. The other piece is accessory dwelling units, which are, they do include middle housing and vice versa. But they are probably a term we've all been using a lot longer than middle housing. They are also allowed at least two everywhere where single-family houses are allowed. And they could be attached, meaning connected to each other or one connected to the main house and one set aside or both connected to the main house. It could be converting an existing structure. So a garage, a standalone garage or even an attached garage gets turned into a living structure. Those again are things that the city has to now allow in these areas that in the past have been single-family. What that looks like is going into our own city's codes. And you see R1, R2, R3, R4, and then some others across the, the rest of that table. But in yellow down below, you'll see these are the areas that'll really be affected by the middle housing and the ADU requirements. And this is where you're going to get the interest at the open houses and at your public hearing probably. Because this is a significant change and it is a significant change that for the first time is being proposed, not because the city of Lakewood as an entity is saying, council or somebody thinks it's a good idea. This is in response to state law changes. And so trying to communicate that as much as we can ahead of time, but guaranteed you're going to get questions about this when you get to your public hearings. So right now we have these R1 through R4. And if you were to go into our complete, uh, excuse me, our development regulations, it would say, this is the type of area of the city this is, these are the number of houses per acre. This is the character, if you will. What is being proposed, and this is all very draft language, please don't take it as complete, but there is an idea to rename and re-describe, redefine residential areas to reflect, A, it has to be affordable to all those different levels and B, there's different types of housing units that would need to be required, or need to be allowed in each one. So the idea that will be coming to you is, no longer do we have these historic R1 through R4s, we have these new zones which allow X, Y, or Z. To explain a little more about how the ADU and the middle housing requirements will affect Lakewood, see if I can make this a little bigger for you. This map is showing you in this golden rod, these are basically the R1 through the R4 areas for the city. And where two units per lot would apply. And there's also this up further north and down along the northern part of Tillicum. The orange, and if you see, it's kind of like a U here and that, the orange parcels, that is because of their proximity to either a bus rapid transit route or the Pierce Transit Center in the downtown. This is where you can get four units on a parcel. And this is also where the off-street improvements, including parking spaces, are not allowed for the city to require. So there's going to be parking pressures anticipated here because of that. So you have, basically the western side of the city is where going to be, yes, they'll be densifying, but less so than what you would have in, in kind of this U shape. I'm going to skip that so as to avoid confusion. What you have here is a map, and I think I showed you at least some of this last time. But this is now taking a look at, again, where those areas are in the city. And now you've got blue and you've got this gold up here. These are areas that will either for sure have to do this higher density up here. It's a maybe because there are historic covenants and restrictions on the parcels that at this point would not allow more units per lot. And right now, state law says, okay, if you've got a pre-existing covenant restriction, then that will govern. What you see now here in this U part is there's now these areas that would be blue, other than you've got kind of green circles on top of them. That is because there are either gary oaks or other significant trees that would be considered something that would limit where more density would happen. Because you are, kind of like I mentioned before, we've got competing policies of, of tree canopy and climate change improvement, and then you also have the densification. So where it's pure blue, that's where it will, you know, go forward and apply. The gold is a maybe, it'll be a case-by-case basis. And then in this area where you see the green and actually by this area on the west side too and down in Tillicum, these trees are going to limit the full effect of all of those densification requirements.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Just because it's oak-dominated, does that mean that there's a way around that per se? Is that correct?
No, oak-dominated is saying that it is likely considered a critical area and would be protected even more so than an alder or something like that. So the, the gary oaks, if you remember, a couple of years ago, there was a tree code update made that protects them as critical areas if there's more than one together, which would comprise a stand. And so you will see, I know this is kind of small for you, but I'll blow it up if I can. You've got areas like right here, there's just a, a few little trees that might affect maybe one or two parcels. But down here, you see in Tillicum, it's a pretty solid cover. And so this area, you'll, you'll have some of that densification happen on parcels. Down here, there's going to be a lot of the area in Tillicum that it would not apply to because of that. So this again ties right into parking because the city right now does not, in its residential areas, allow on-street parking. That is in part because some of the areas, the streets are simply too narrow to allow it. It is also just a policy that's been held by the city, as far as I know, since incorporation. There is areas in the downtown and the Station District where shared parking or on-street parking is anticipated. It doesn't physically, I don't know that any of the projects yet in those areas have done it yet, but it's allowed in code. But in those residential areas, it's not.
Clarification now.
Sure.
Just saying is that the residential area must have parking, on-site parking. They can, they can't use the street as their main parking. There has to be a garage or a parking site or something on the lot. But in some cases, you're saying that that's not.
What you would say up until today is that a jurisdiction, whether it's Lakewood or anybody else, can say, if you're going to build a duplex on this property, you have to do so many parking spaces per unit. And it could be one, it could be more. And if, if the city wanted to, could say, you, instead of having all of that on-site, you could have some or all of that on the surrounding street to some distance away from your parcel. Under the new rules, what is going on is within a half-mile of a transit area. So if you think about that U-shaped thing I was just talking about, that's one of them. You are no longer allowed to do that. The city can no longer say, you have to have so many parking spaces per lot. And in some cases, you're not even allowed with the accessory dwelling units to say, you need to improve the street in front of your parcel, like fix curb gut or sidewalk kind of stuff. Because there's so much emphasis right now in this, in this law to allow additional housing units to come in. And so for Lakewood, which is a jurisdiction that has not historically had on-street parking, as opposed to Tacoma or as opposed to Seattle, for instance, just as the extreme, the change in parking patterns with this many more potential units in an area over time is going to cause pressure on Lakewood's street system and parking capacity. And so that's where we're saying as a staff coming to council to say, hey, do you want to look at your policy where right now, in theory, if you don't park on-site, you don't park anywhere? What are you going to do with up to four more units on a lot in an area where you can't make them put the parking on the lot? It just gets that much more complicated. So that'll be part of the discussion with council.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Go ahead.
With regard to the parking, is there, and forgive me for not researching this ahead of time, but has there been any discussion or ability up to this point for the, the, or city-owned parking structures, if you will? Or is that, or is this going to be left solely to the private market if, if that's the way things end up going? I guess, yeah.
That is part of actually what was talked about this last fall that Mr. Jatta was alluding to earlier, where you may want to pick this up again since you, a majority of you are new. But right now, the city does not have city-owned parking garages, for instance. There's been talk in the past of maybe working with the Sound Transit Parking Station and allowing people that aren't riding the transit system to, to use it and get a permit or something. There's been talk with regards to all of these things. Well, maybe we create a residential permit area and people pay for a permit. Or maybe there is this change again where we have to re-stripe roads. So if, even if they can't physically be widened, they can be re-stripped to allow parking on one side of a shoulder. Do we start to look as a city at changing the type of grants, transportation grants that the city is trying to go after to make sure that they incorporate, we need to expand our, our street system, even though it's an existing road, because there's this much more capacity and this much more need for on-street parking? Some of that went to the council this last fall from the commission, but that's something that you can certainly be talking about again. And it'll be a question for the council as well, if they want to take that route of maybe creating new public parking opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Spear, go ahead.
Yeah, so this little, a couple of maps here is kind of what I've been talking about. So again, this is the U that was the quarter mile where it was going to be four units per lot. And then we started talking about trees and that affects it. And then we started talking about trees and that affects it. But within this area where it does apply, you can put up those four additional units. This is where there is a limit on the amount of parking that you can require. The other one is a half-mile buffer, so it's a little bit wider. And again, you can't require onsite parking in this half-mile radius. And it also applies further south down in Tillicum too. No parking requirements are allowed to be imposed. So how over time is this going to affect the streets and the parking situation in the city is the question.
Ms. Dolman.
So to further, I guess, to get some clarification, does that also mean that the city could not and could not implement managed street parking, like residential permit parking?
It doesn't limit that. And that is where the policy question for city council will be, is given the fact that there's under the development regulation scheme now, there's this many more limitations on what the city can require of a private development going in. What type of of overarching parking and street design scheme does the city want to adopt? You want to stick with the status quo or do you want to do something different?
To follow up along those lines, has there been any consideration about what that means? Or I guess the either the pressures or the demands from like RVs and RV, RV is needing a place to park particularly because arguably they are mobile home, but they are a vehicle that also may come with an ADU potentially. So I guess, yeah, I'm kind of asking ahead of, ahead of the tea leaves, I guess what the thoughts and considerations are for that type of demand. Because I think particularly that type of, it would be good to address that at some point. Because that just changes, I think, the, that can add a different characteristic to to the neighborhoods and streets, so.
As it stands right now, Lakewood's accessory dwelling units are stick-built structures or or, you know, prefab structures. They're not RVs, they're not some sort of temporary pop-up type of thing. And I don't anticipate that changing. I don't think state law requires anything like that to happen. So Lakewood will be able to say this is what constitutes a middle housing unit or an accessory dwelling unit. But there is the question, like you say, of not only guest parking, but the people who live there and how big their vehicles are and how much space there is on or off off-site for all of that. Yeah.
Yeah. Good question.
The other complicating thing, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but what you see on this map, which is now looking hopefully a little bit familiar, but these red lines that are now added are streets that are less than what would allow for on-street parking regardless, whether the city council changed its mind and said, yes, we want to allow it all the time with or without permits, whatever. These are narrow enough as they sit right now where our public works department feels it wouldn't be safe to have on-street parking. And so that that's a lot of the area that might be affected by these changes. So again, what this is doing is just highlighting an issue for council and for yourselves, how to deal with this at a policy level. Obviously, not every single parcel owner on January 1, 2025, when this stuff goes into effect, is going to say, I want to put four units on my parcel. It's going to be a gradual process for all of this development to occur. However, you need to plan ahead and transportation improvements and and expansion of streets that already exist in a residential area. That's not exactly a hot topic for grants, which is how the city funds much of its transportation improvement. So they're going to have to plan long and hard and creatively to try to fund any changes that they feel are necessary should the council direct that. So this is just one more thing on top of all the other stuff we've been talking about.
Ms. Spear, this doesn't even include the private roads.
Here you go, right here.
Okay.
They are different. This, I should have said that. This is a map that incorporates the public roads that are less than 60 feet. And then we also have private streets throughout the city as well, that at this point, I couldn't tell you exactly how many are are wider or narrower than 60. I would hazard a guess that most of our private streets are going to be narrower than the public. And many, if not most, would predate incorporation. So these are also going to have to be addressed too if they are in parts of the city. For instance, parts of Oak Brook up to the north and parts of these other areas to the to the west. How would these streets be affected by this parking changes or our housing density changes? So to finish up here, I just to give you an early heads-up look at what you're going to see. On the left-hand side of this table is the existing language of, in this case, it's housing element exart. On the right-hand column, you'll see suggested changes. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to offend, but is there anybody colorblind on the planning commission? Because right now, we're looking, we're using red and green, and I don't want to have any problems. Okay. We'll try to make it very clear for those who might be in the public that that they'll still be able to understand what's happening. But what you see here is suggested changes, for instance, in red that are removing language, and the green with underline is additional language or new language. The middle column is going to explain why the change is being proposed. So this is the type of presentation you will get for every single element, explaining that either some of this is perfectly fine as is, some of it needs a little bit of changing, some of it needs removal altogether and replacement. Those types of comments will be brought to you for every single piece of the comprehensive plan. And then, again, sticking with housing, this is where you would see at the beginning of the housing element, a very brief introduction, kind of laying the land of what what is being talked about in this element, what is some historical background as part of Lakewood's uniqueness. And then we get into the actual goals and policies laid out that would be then be implemented through regulation. So that's the type of layout you're going to see as we move ahead into review and public hearing.
Ms. Spear.
Yes.
For me, it was easier to understand this policy, ADU 1.1. If I put some numbers to it, for example, 30% of AMI, we're talking about someone who makes $19,659, for example, to me, that made more sense. The 80 to 90, that's $65,000. So to me, so get an idea of the individuals who are in that category. I mean, that's all they make. The max would be 78,637. And again, our AMI is 65,000, I think you said.
That's the household area median income citywide, meaning half of the households make more than that and half of them make less. What I can also do is provide you with a link to the report that was actually put together that analyzes in detail the city's demographics, the population, its its affordability levels, the number of units that are available right now at these levels. And that was talked about by the planning commission probably close to a year ago now. But I will send you links to both the discussion and the materials themselves because they will help flush this out. What I hear you though, Mr. Chair, saying is that as we bring this to you again, having those kinds of supplemental stuff. Yeah. And then what you'll also see with the new draft comprehensive plan is we are going to have additional appendices that our current plan does not. There's a lot of text, a lot of background, a lot of conversation within the plan itself, which almost distracts you to the point where you can't really follow necessarily what are the policies, what are the goals? And so we're purposely pulling that stuff out and setting it into an appendix. So when you're reading the plan, you can see very clearly goals and policies. And then if you want to dive deeper into a particular topic, you'll be able to do that through the appendix. Any questions on that?
One more comment for myself. So I mentioned to you before the meeting that we had a little difference in number of housing units in one, on page nine, it says 9,000. But here, after we add up these units by AMI level, it's only 5,600. So what's the difference?
Yeah. So they are two different calculations under two different schemes and requirements from the state. So the magic number, total number of housing units that Lakewood has to say, we are going to grow by this much according to our plans and regulations by 2044, is 9,378 units. The calculation for how many units the city has to plan for at 0 to 30%, 50 to 80%, whatever the breakout is now under that economic study, doesn't add up to 9,378 in total. That's what Mr. Estrada was just saying. That's because it's separate and it is saying as a minimum, you need to have this many units in your area by 2044 at this level of affordability. So if you're planning and you're going along, you're saying, hey, we've already hit all of our 30 to 50% requirement, more can go into that category in order to hit your 9,378 total. Okay? It may well be if the 100 to 120%, that's basically market rate, that may be where you have the the quote extra units coming in. But if you have active affordable housing providers and they come in with multiple extra units, if you want to call it that, that's perfectly fine.
Any questions?
I had another question.
Ms. Wallace, go ahead.
The city also has a goal, a tree canopy goal. And so how are we going to address that with all of this need for housing units? Because there's someone in conflict. And also, how do we address the wildlife issues?
Exactly. I will just answer you, yes. That that are, or those are two of the major policy things that the council and yourselves will have to grapple with. Again, under the Growth Management Act, those are all equal weight, equal importance. And so where staff is coming from, when we will bring you this draft, it will be, this is what the law requires, this is what Lakewood has done historically, this is where we think Lakewood has discretion still to say, this is something that we are going to prioritize as a jurisdiction, or this is where there is no discretion anymore and things just simply have to change. And so with those four things in front of you, hopefully, it will be clear where you can say, you know what, tree canopy and climate change is where we want to really focus for these areas where in the past, there's been very little or no tree canopy. We need to focus on planting and improving quality of life for these up, this population. Or maybe it's, this is the area where we know we should be encouraging higher housing density and and potentially less tree canopy because the infrastructure is there, there's the space for the additional housing units. It'll be that kind of analysis. We'll just try to give you the the broadside brackets, I'll just call it, for how far you can take that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions? One more comment. Your middle housing aspect, you said that it needed to be, that state felt that we needed to emphasize middle housing, but yet isn't about 65% of our housing now multi?
What we have right now is about a 45% owner, 54%, 55% renter, and much of the rental is multifamily units. Yes. And so that's the other thing is, on the one hand, these laws that have been passed are pretty uniform across the board, you shall. And they don't recognize that Lakewood has a different housing stock than even Tacoma, let alone some a jurisdiction in King County. So it's a matter of trying to tiptoe your way through what you have to do and balance that against the unique requirements or limitations of your particular city.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay.
That's it for me?
That's it.
Okay. I would just remind you though, Mr. Chair, to approve meeting minutes from last night.
Yes, I was just going to say that I was remiss in doing that. So let's go to that, you all had the opportunity to review the minutes that were sent to you. Did anyone have any comments or corrections to them? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve. Anyone?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Herr motions to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Ms. Wallace, a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Thank you. Okay. On our agenda, it says next steps.
Next steps, Mr. Chair, I think actually what we can also, oh, I'm sorry. Next steps would be just to let you know that your next meeting is February 7. And in addition to continuing to talk about some of these issues, there's going to be a topic coming to you called the residential target areas for multifamily tax exemption. And I know we're throwing names and concepts and acronyms at you at lightning speed right now, new members. But you will have our economic development manager here to explain that to you. This is an issue that was brought up last fall at the city council, and this is an example of where they were offered the opportunity to take action, but they wanted more feedback from you first. So they have sent an issue back to the planning commission to talk about it more. So Becky Newton is her name, she'll be here on February 7 to explain that to you.
And very briefly, strategically, multifamily tax exemption means?
Okay. If you break down that name, multifamily tax exemption, it is precisely that. It is an intended incentive for developers who bring multifamily proposals to the city, and they want to perhaps provide something above and beyond what's required by code, or they want to incorporate a certain percentage of affordable housing and keep those units affordable for a certain amount of time. They are allowed to have either an eight, a 12, or a 20-year tax exemption under state law, meaning they don't pay property tax on the land underneath the development for those number of years. And it's an incentive because it's a it's a lower startup cost then or a construction cost for them to build those units. The land potentially wouldn't have been improved otherwise. And the city sees the improved tax revenue as soon as that time ends, the exemption ends, and that's where the city sees a benefit over time as well. The RTAs are the residential target areas for that are specific spots in the city where the city council said, we want to concentrate this type of an incentive because this is where we want this stuff to happen first. So the discussion this next time with Becky Newton is going to be, there's an established map, we are wanting to make a change to that, here's why, and then it'll be up to you to discuss that and decide how you want to recommend on it.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to reports, Mr. Bokey, please.
Thank you very much. And I'm Paul Bokey. I'm your city council liaison, and I will be the liaison for this year because we just did the assignments a week or two ago at council. So welcome, new members. Thank you very much for for taking this on. Very important committee. It goes, and I think it's important to recognize that this is one of the few, you know, we have a number of citizen committees and we depend on them to do a lot of things. This is one that's actually statutory, right? We have to have it. You are sitting in and you do take public comment and there is a record produced. And so it is a, it is a big responsibility and you also have a big responsibility. And I think Ms. Spear did a good job of capturing it tonight. The council really does depend on you to do a lot of the legwork, right? A lot of the groundwork on things like the comp plan. We could do it, I guess, but we would have to add a lot of meetings and we'd already bring our judgment to it because we're elected officials. So the the planning commission is is critical in really getting that public input and really working on that plan. And of course, the comprehensive plan process, which only comes around every 10 years, is very important. And there are a lot of elements to it this year. We've we've made it a little bit more complicated with the sub-area plans and various things like that, and the state keeps adding responsibilities. So thank you, thank you very much for that. You touched on a number of issues that we've already, we discussed at the council. I think Ms. Spear's descriptions of the council's action or inaction on things like short-term rental housing and parking was was very good. I mean, I think she captured it, that we were, I wouldn't say frozen, but we didn't know what to do with them, to be quite honest. And and I think those are two really good examples of, we are doing some things in the short term. We have asked, and I think it's important to note, we have asked the staff to come forward with a proposal to begin the business licensing process and 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 so that way we can begin to at least capture the lodging tax from from those entities, which I believe is only fair from the standpoint that we've got hoteliers who who have to charge the tax. So but after that, we are of really no consensus on that. We're just, the council's. We're just, the council's, you know, off to a fairly slow start, I guess. We've done our committee assignments. We've approved last night the boards, the work plans for all the boards and commissions, including yours, although again, yours is kind of set for the year with the comp plan process. The other item is that I just would say Saturday at 11:00 a.m., Forest Silicon Park is the welcome walk, which we started last year. And last year, we got good weather for it. Actually, I think it was a sunny day. You know, I mean, it's January, right? So just hang in there, but it is really neat. And I met some really interesting people that came and have moved here from a long ways away and actually weren't military-related in one case. You know, they'd just moved to the area and like a relative nearby or something like that. And they had chosen Lakewood as their home. So it's an interesting, it's an interesting time and it's fun to get out and walk in the park and all the improvements we've made there. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will go back to you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Bauckey, and welcome again this year.
Thank you.
As our liaison. Ms. Spear, Ms. Deveraux, is there anything else that we need to cover from y'all?
No, Mr. Chair.
Is anything y'all would like to say? Mr. Herr?
Well, Mr. Chair, can you, can you say the time for the meeting at the pavilion next week? The community meeting?
Yeah, it's January 23rd, starting at 5:30 p.m. And it'll go until 7:00, and then the same time for the one on February 28.
Okay, and then is there anybody on staff that's scheduled to be there? I'm assuming you'll be there.
I will be there, yes, and that will have several others as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, Ms. Wallace? With the completion of our agenda. Thank you all, thank you all.
Thank you all.